I can't remember the fire chief's name.
Jason.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. It'll get better as time goes on.
I'm not worried.
I hope. I'm getting older and you know how the brain is. All right, let's call a meeting to order. And anybody comes in, I'll pause for a moment and then invite them in. First item up on the agenda is the introduction of all those present. And I think we've gone through that. Denise, you have them all down?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Next item up is approve the minutes of September 3rd meeting.
I made the motion to approve the minutes of September 3rd meeting.
And I will second that. Is there any admissions, corrections, errors in those minutes?
I didn't see anything.
I didn't either. So all those in favor of approving the minutes as printed signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, no. It's just Jerry and I. Minutes approved in past. Next item up is the appearances. Just a minute, we got somebody that might... No? Oh, Deanne Minier is wanting to come in. I am going to admit her. And she should be on shortly.
She's a...
Deanne?
She works at Community Bank. You've seen her before.
And... Hi, Deanne.
She just listens, I guess. I'm gonna learn to mute this when I'm talking here. Uh, where is it? Where am I? Yeah.
Can you hear me, Deanne?
Now they can't hear me. I just muted.
She's connecting to audio right now. Hi, Deanne.
Him? Duckless.
I don't know if she can hear me. She's still trying to connect. She's muted. Deanne, if you can hear me, you need to unmute or push your taskbar and say you can't hear us.
I can hear you.
All right, thank you. Let's move back on. Appearances, I mean, sorry, appearances by local citizens and visitors. Do we have anybody that would like to speak that's not specific on the agenda for this evening? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. And we had it 5:55. Wow, we're going too fast here. John Moran was going to introduce. Do you know if he was going to participate by Zoom, Denise?
Yeah, I think he was. Well, I had sent him an agenda.
Okay.
Something may have come up, I don't know.
So we may have to go back to that when he shows up at 5:55. So we can, we can go on to the next item, which is Jason Willis, Newport Center Fire Department. He's here with us. Jason?
How you doing?
Good.
Good, good. No, I just wanted to introduce myself to you guys. That I'm the new interim chief until January, when we have our regular business meeting. I'm looking forward to actually having a relationship with the board in the town and start on the right foot and just get things going how they, how I feel they should have been going. As in communication wise, anything we can help out with, with the town. Myself and Denise have had some conversations. Myself and Mike Beara have had some conversations about, you know, the water situation, stuff like that to get some things figured out. That's basically what I have. I'd like to be on your agenda every couple months in case you guys have any questions. If we have, if I have any questions for you guys, you know, just keep that communication open. I think it would be good for us and both the town.
Okay. Do you want us to schedule you every other month on our select board meetings?
Yep, that would be fine if you guys want to do that.
I don't see a problem. When we put the agenda together, six times a year, we'll have you come visit us.
Absolutely. And anything in between, if you need anything, I know I opened up. I let Denise know for voting this year, if you need a bigger space. The fire station's always, you know, we can pull a truck out. So we have, you have that space that you need. So
Great.
Any, anything I can do or we can do, just let us know.
Okay.
Denise has a couple of business, has some business cards that I had made up to hand out. That way you guys have information how to get ahold of me. I work two days a week for Newport Ambulance, so Tuesdays and Fridays, so I'm available every other day.
Great, good, super.
Any questions for me, or?
Well, I don't. Jerry, do you have any?
No, no.
No, we're all fine. Anybody else want to talk to the fire? New interim fire chief? No, hearing none. Let's move on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome to stay.
I'll stay for a little bit, not a problem. I got, I got our regular meeting at 7 o'clock, so.
Okay.
If you see me gone, there's probably a reason, so. Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to the water sewer solar panel report. We have a Bobby Lemay update on the water. I don't see Bob joining us at this point. He may come on later. I just shared with everybody that we did, Mike got nettles, was it Denise? Nettles Plumbing and Heating?
Yep.
Over to his house and did the repairs. The meter was bad. Put in a new meter. Fixed the, some kind of piping or something that wasn't proper, but. So I just want to let, and I guess water's okay. We haven't heard anything. Have you heard anything, Denise, from Mr. Lemay?
No.
Okay, so moving on. Barry's up next with questions on asset management water system. Barry?
Yeah. I got, I'd like to-
Barry, you are muted. You will need to unmute.
Yeah, okay.
Here we go.
Stupid, I'm stupid. All right. I'd like to point out a couple of the laws as a lot of people don't know. My issue here with the select board and sometimes doesn't go right is, is the transparency. And I'd like to just quickly go through two laws, a couple of laws that, that really mean something and you know, I get the feeling that the I, I get this distinct feeling, select board doesn't take these laws seriously. And so I'm talking general, general provisions, chapter 5, common law, general rights, VSA 311A. In enacting this subchapter, the legislator finds and declares that public, public commissions, boards and councils and other public agencies in this state exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business and are accountable to them pursuant to chapter 1, article 6 of the Vermont Constitution. Are accountable to them is my problem. And this is what I argue about many times over. And you know, it's, it's things about money that are not being transparent and another thing, here's another very pertinent rule, number 312, right to attend meetings of public agencies. No resolution, rule, regulation, appointment or formal action shall be considered binding as except, as taking at such meetings. Except as provided under subdivision of 312, and that's usually criminal records and stuff like that. A meeting of a public body is subject to the public accommodation and requirements of 9 VSA, chapter 139. And basically what that means is when you ask a question, we, we deserve an answer. And many times I've not got answers. And it's not specifically denying the answer. It's diverting the attention, subterfuge, answering a question with another question and things like that that are disturbing. And it happens quite frequently and I filed many complaints on that. And I did file a complaint last year in January because I went to a meeting on the budget. And I was told, I went to the meeting, I was the only one who attended. And open meetings are for people to attend, ask questions and become involved. But I was told, we're, we're having a meeting, we don't bother us. I was not allowed to ask questions. So I filed a complaint and the response to the complaint, I had to, the select board had to respond to the complaint by, by scheduling a meeting. And at this meeting, Steve Barret made a motion. No, I gotta tell you, at the meeting, I had to come up with a cure which would resolve the issue. And you know, it's not money or anything. And my cure was, I'd like to have some discussions on the open meeting laws. And Steve Barret and, there was a unanimous decision that they didn't do anything wrong and they were not gonna have the meeting, they were not gonna cure the issue, which leaves it open for, you know, further actions if, if need be. So Steve Barret said, he make a motion to keep things the same. And I'm, I'm, what I get that, what I get from that is they're not gonna comply to the open meeting laws. Now these laws, there are laws, I discussed this before, and I'm disturbed by that, you know, but they're not going to, that's what I got unless I, unless I got that wrong. We're gonna stay the same. Well, I'm gonna stay the same as well and I'm gonna insist that these laws and our constitutional rights are complied with. Okay, that's it. Now, so the thing is, for instance, last, last, last meeting at 15, that would be September, at 15 minutes and 32 seconds, at the last meeting, Steve Barret said, we have been allowed to develop the rate structure without that asset managed plan being in place because, because of that COVID thing. Now this specifically is what I'm talking about. Now, we don't know anything about the asset managed program. Despite me asking, I've got vague answers. And not only that, this, this asset manage, yes, asset managed thing is involving tens of thousands of dollars. I have asked Denise to help me to be transparent on that. And it was, it was avoided and she dodged it. And I'm not getting into that, but I would like to still know. I don't know what the asset management program is. And there's a lot of questions. Now, this is common about the lack of transparency. One sentence that there's a lot to and the, the Steve Barret and the select board feel, it feels as though they told us what was happening. There's only one sentence there. And you know, so I got a vague idea what the asset management plan is. You're gonna collect money and charge the, I don't know what it is. I want an explanation on that, exactly what it is. And I also need to know how much you're gonna spend and what you're gonna buy and what you're gonna do with this money. We have the right to know. The water users are left in the dark a lot in the last couple of years. And I could go on. And so this has got to change. And if I file a complaint, everyone, yeah, Steve Barret starts pouting and getting angry. Like I'm not supposed to, you know, exercise my constitutional rights. If you don't want me to file complaints, answer questions and be more transparent. But of course, Steve will say, we are transparent. Denise will say, we are transparent. That's the response generally. So, exactly. It said, okay, I'll go over what Steve said, quote, exactly, we have been allowed to develop the rate structure without that asset managed plan being in place because of that COVID thing. We have been allowed. Allowed by who? That's the first question.
All right, I'd like to explain what the asset management plan is.
Wait a minute, I've been muted by host?
With the USDA.
Am I muted?
And we're
Why did you mute me? Did you mute me?
We got a grant for $27,000 to inventory all of the pieces of our water system. The pumps, the reservoir, the arsenic treatment, the lines. Everything gets written down and recorded. In that, those assets, they are then identified on lifespan, how long they would last. And also the maintenance on those pieces. And the expected cost for replacement at end of life. This is important information to have when putting a long-term budget together where you can budget accordingly so that there aren't any major expectations because of something failed that you weren't aware that it was going to.
Yeah, that's fine and well, I know that, but I asked you a specific question. I would like a specific answer. You didn't just mute me a little, a few minutes ago.
Currently, we are-
You muted me? Are you muting me?
Aldrich and Elliot are meeting with, are gonna meet with Mike next week to-
Why are you muting me?
So that we can talk without you talking over me.
I need an answer to my question. I asked you a specific question. If you mute, if you mute me one more time, I'm filing a complaint. I have the right to speak at these meetings.
You do, but you also need to let somebody speak when they are speaking.
You're, you are, you are dodging the question as usual. That's why I don't like it. I asked you a specific question. Who? Allowed by whom? We have been allowed. We need to know answers. This is common. I want the people to know, this is the way they dodge questions. He answers another question. I asked a specific question, please answer it. And don't mute me. You mute me again, I'm filing a complaint tomorrow morning. I'm tired of being shut up.
Steve, can I speak, please?
No, no, Denise, stay out of this. You've caused enough problems. Look, I know, this is a good old boy cover-up. I'm, I'm tired of it. Let me talk to him. Let me talk to him.
It was suggested by the state of Vermont and by Aldrich and Elliot that we develop this rate structure and have life, shelf lives of all of our assets so that we would know how much to put into the budget for repair, maintenance and replacement of all these things. Now that COVID has come along and kind of put a monkey wrench in this, the state of Vermont, along with Aldrich and Elliot, feel it's better to just go forward without having this done. We can still go ahead and do them simultaneously. Instead of waiting for this to be done, we can develop a rate structure. We can tweak the rates later, you know, we're gonna have to update our ordinance, but we can just tweak the rates later if we have too much money in our budget for this or not enough money in our budget for this. So that's what we're doing.
So
I'd like to-
Let me, she's talking, I'd like to respond and ask another question.
I would like to-
Politely, Barry, politely, please.
I would like to hold off for a minute because we just had a new participant join. It's 673-4741. Could you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, for the record, this is John Moran calling. I apologize for not getting on earlier. I've had some internet issues, so I decided just to call in.
Not a problem. Mr. Moran, we're right in the middle of our agenda on discussing a water and sewer solar. Can you wait just a minute before we can get back to you?
Absolutely. I'm actually interested in that, so that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Now Barry, it's back to you.
You gotta unmute him.
You, you, that's it. I'm not gonna take this being muted. This is an open meeting. I have, I have the right to speak.
What's your question, Barry? You had a question for me?
Yeah, yeah, I've got, I've got a question for you. So that means this, this asset management is gonna increase the water bill, right? Because you're taking money to put in a fund in case something breaks. So, and you say-
No, I did not say that.
That's what I'm asking. It's a question.
I cannot say whether the water rates are going to increase or not. As we've said numerous times, we do not know the answer to that.
Well, you're gonna ask for money to put into this fund, are you not? And not, the water, municipal waters are gonna be responsible for that, right?
Well, yeah, we, and presently our water budget, if you look in your town report, has money set aside every year for the lines as well as the wells. That's part of your water budget now.
Okay, so you know, okay, I, I get that and everything, but still. You know, what, what specifically, what what equipment is gonna be, you're gonna put, we'll put aside money for a new, I mean, a new arsenic plant, a new arsenic machine, which is-
Steve, Barry, what happens is an asset management plan will categorize, I can't speak, Mike is not here today. Mike is the expert on this. I can only know what, I can only tell you what I know. It's going to categorize all of our assets and it is going to say, okay, you have a pump in well number one that is 15 years old. The life of that pump is 20 years. So in five years, more than likely, you're gonna have to bank on replacing that pump. So you need to put certain dollars away for upgrading your equipment. Just like if you're gonna buy a house, you're gonna put certain money away each year for household repairs based on the life of windows and roofs and siding. Same concept with all of your water infrastructure.
Okay, so you have been allowed, you have been allowed, still allowed by Elliot and Aldrich? They tell you what to do? Allowed by? I mean, that's, that's-
And we have, no, not just Aldrich and Elliot. The people at USDA, they, everybody recommended that we hold off because this rate struck, this asset plan was going to be done much earlier. But COVID shut everything down for three, four, five months. Some people still are not back to work yet.
Okay, there was a plan, according to Steve, he was going to announce the rate structure and get it happening in, in December. Does that mean that is put off as well?
The rate structure is being talked about now. Aldrich and Elliot are putting together a a preliminary rate structure. They're working on it now. When they get information, they will come to a select board slash water board meeting and explain the different types of rate structures and how they suggest that we move forward with ours in our town.
Okay, are you gonna have a meeting that we can go to or is that same?
I think it's going to be a select board slash water board meeting, yes. Obviously, the water board will be involved at that point as well as the select board.
And the people as well.
It's a public meeting.
Yeah, well, I could, I could go on about that, about the, those nine meetings that were never, we weren't allowed to go to while three quarters of a million dollars was spent. It's still, that is still an open issue that disturbs me and it's, it's still unresolved. And I don't like it. I don't know if the people know actually what happened. Three quarters of a million dollars. And I'd like to know, I'd like to ask the question, how you came up with this, this, this policy where, because Rick, you, you make it okay because I, Steve is delegated to sign off on all the contracts. And you decided, how did you come about that, that you didn't have to, you didn't have, because it wasn't a quorum, you didn't have to take, didn't have to take minutes and you didn't announce it to the people? The water committee wasn't there. We're talking nine, nine meetings, three quarters of a million dollars, all written off by one guy, by Steve Barret. And I would have went to all of the meetings, I would have taped them, but it never happened. And so could you tell me, did you get advised by a lawyer on that or did you just assume that was the law?
Now, I, I would like to speak to that. And Barry, if you interrupt me, I will mute you. Do you understand that?
I'm filing a complaint tomorrow. Yeah, I'm just, just threatened to be muted every time. This is an open meeting. It's an open meeting. Sometimes thing, you-
All right, what he's talking about on the three quarters of a million dollars was that we had a special town, or I think it was held at town meeting, a bond vote to repair the water system. That was discussed at town meeting and so voted by the whole town to pass that bond. We then started the project and the meetings that he's talking about, that Aldrich and Elliot, with the engineers, with the USDA and with the town's representative.
And the contractor.
And I was appointed by the select board to attend those meetings as the owner of the water system.
Owner? You gotta be kidding me. Owner. You're not the owner. The people own.
The way it's designed is-
That's it. I've had it with you. Unmute me.
Authorized representative is actually what you were called, Steve.
Right, but in the-
I'm not gonna put up with this, Steve, this muting. This muting and you, and, and then you go off onto another direction. I like, this is what we need to know. We need to know the answer. I asked you once again, a specific question. Where did you come up with arrangement policy of the fact that you don't have to have the, you don't notice the people for the meetings to spend three quarters of a million dollars? I haven't stopped talking yet. You're interrupting me. I haven't, let me finish my sentence.
If you would listen, you would get the-
You're the other one who needs to listen.
Oh, just let him talk. We're gonna re-explain it the same way again, so just let him finish.
No, you didn't explain anything. I said, where did you get this policy? And, and you know, and I did, I, I wanna remind you, Denise. I said, this policy is not right. I have lawyers that are questioning it. And I said, would you kindly go to the VLCT? We pay them, what, five grand a year? They could, and you said, no, you didn't wanna do that. Why didn't you wanna go and clarify this law? I had, I had statements from the Secretary of State and they said, this is offbeat, this is not good to have the meetings. And, and I just read, I just read you something of the law that said, no, no contracts are binding unless it's done at an open meeting with a quorum. But you're saying it really wasn't a quorum because you said, had Rick stay home and Jerry stay home. An arrangement. And it was a cover-up, a subterfuge, obfuscate, whatever you wanna call it. And I wanted a little clarity. I asked you to go to the VLCT and you didn't do it. I would think, you know, in, you know, to serve the people, that you would clarify this by going to them and showing, showing the people that these, it was all right to do that. Because I'm getting mixed messages. It wasn't all right to do that. And I don't like the fact that three quarters of a million dollars is handled by one man. No one else can go and hear it. No one else can be attendance to the meeting with contractors and everything. Nobody, nobody is gonna, this is one of the, this is one of the worst abuses in government, is spending money and not being accountable for it.
Are you done, Barry? Cause I wanna-
No, I'm not done. I'm not done. I've only been talking a few minutes. Please don't shut me off. I am not done.
I'm gonna, if you don't stop and allow me to explain things, I'm gonna put you back in the waiting room. You're gonna file a complaint anyway. And once I put you in the waiting room, you will be gone. Do you understand?
Look, you're not letting me speak. You keep interrupting me. Let me speak. Answer my questions. That's all I'm asking. That's what these meetings are about.
Can I answer the question?
Yeah, why? I'm asked, I asked you that question. Why don't you go to the VLCT? To be, to be transparent to the people about this. This seems to be a law that you, you conjugated. You know, it doesn't, and I've told, you know, I told you what, what I, what I heard from the, you know, the Secretary of State, I just read you a law that no contracts are binding. What are you doing in a, in a meeting without being?
Okay, when you stop talking, I'll answer.
Yeah, well, you know, you're gonna interrupt me. You and Steve are experts, 20 years. You know how to shut somebody up. Okay, please answer me. I wanna listen to an answer to the specific question I asked you.
The $745,000 was, was authorized by the voters of the town of Newport to be spent for water and sewer, water improvement.
I know that, Denise. My question once again, my specific question was, you came up with sort of a policy that said the meeting really wasn't a meeting because you said, Rick, stay home and Jerry, stay home for nine meetings. And we, and vote to delegate Steve to do all the work. But that doesn't exempt you from taking minutes and letting the people know what's going on. I, I proved that. The Secretary of State told me. They're still gonna take minutes. They've still got to do, even though, yeah, he's delegated. And the other guys, they have to be informed. They weren't informed by your admission. So something was very wrong with this. Do you know, if this was, if this were to go to court, you know what they do? I'll explain this again. What they would do is, what a judge generally rules in a case where you spend, a town spends money without doing it in front of the people, he rescinds.
Went in front of the people.
He orders, he orders the town to rescind all the contracts and do them all over again. Now, that would be a tremendous burden. And all that I'm asking is where you came up with this policy? Was there something you assumed?
No.
Once the, once the money was approved, then-
See, there you go. I'm, I'm asking a specific question. Where did you come up with this policy? That you don't have to-
They were not the town of Newport's meetings.
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. There were meetings where money was being spent, that's all. Money was being spent. You and Steve were there. They were part of the town. It's, you're telling me another, another subterfuge. It was their meeting and you were just attending.
The money wasn't.
It was our money you were spending. Our money you were spending paying them. We have the right to know how you spend our money.
At, at the select board meetings, at the first of every month, the select board signed the warrant.
No, see, that's, that's not the issue. The issue is, you stop me, muting me. Stop muting me. I'll file two complaints. I'm filing two complaints in the next two weeks. And one of them is gonna be specifically.
I have not muted him.
Okay.
Who's mute me then? I have to unmute it? Someone else?
Barry, you unmuted yourself, Barry.
Yeah, sure I did.
You were muted.
Yeah, you did mute me. I can't talk at these meetings anymore. Just like nobody could go to the meetings where the money was being spent. You don't allow the people participation at meetings. You're gonna handle all the money.
The money wasn't spent at those meetings, Barry. The money was spent.
There was, there was discussion of it. It was, it was meetings about money. Deny that. It was meetings about money. Decisions were made. You showed me documents of decisions that were made.
Barrett, I speak. Barrett, I speak.
I don't, you didn't, you didn't go to the meetings, Jerry. Why? Nine meetings, you didn't go to one. Why didn't you go to any meetings?
Do you want me to put him in the waiting room?
No, 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 I wanna speak.
Let him speak.
Jerry, come on over. Hi.
Hi. Barry, seven hundred and fifty thousand was voted by the, the people. And that's what we spent on this. Each month, the contractor wanted to be paid. So someone had to go and do a punch list. The money was already theirs. We just didn't give it to them one lump sum.
Doesn't make any difference, Jerry. The people have the right to know what is going on. That is the issue. And we, uh, not, one of the meetings were noticed. I found out about them after all the nine meetings over. The water committee wasn't there. Why weren't they there?
It's, it was the contractors meeting.
No, no, Jerry, it was a town meeting. It was a town meeting. It was a meeting for the townspeople. You're spending, whenever you spend money of the people, you need to, you need to uh, whenever you spend money with the people, it has to, I just read you the law.
Fifty times and he won't let anybody speak. So sue us and get it over with.
Sue you? No, it won't be me, Jerry. You don't understand. You don't understand. You don't understand. Sue us and get it over with. No, I'm not done yet. Everyone interrupts me and doesn't, once I haven't got the answer I wanted. How did you come up with this uh, policy that people don't have to be notified of the meetings? How did you come up with that?
People are notified of any and all meetings.
They were meetings. You're telling us a meeting is not a meeting. Please, please. We need to know what is going on at all times. We need the option to be there at these meetings. You had no right to not announce those meetings and, and uh, as you said, you were meeting with the players. Uh, we need to know what's going on at all times. Some people don't care what's going on. I'm here because I wanna know what's going on. Not only that, there's another reason I'm here. I want the future generation to understand the law. Because one of these days, Steve will drop dead. But you know, um, maybe me too. Hey, what, he thinks he's gonna live here forever? And, and there's no consideration for the next generations. They can't come to these meetings because they're not announced. Everything's done in private. And so it's, it's about the future generations. Right now, some people are starting to get interested. And Steve, someone's gonna run against you next uh, next March, I'm very pleased to say, and I hope he wins. But anyway, we have the right to these meetings. And uh, so I, I, we have the right. You don't have the right to spend money without us having the option to be there. This is not Steve Barret's private company, nor yours Denise. We, we, this is, this is, this is a town. The money is not yours or Steve's. It's the townspeople. We have a right to know what the money is. Any questions about the money is, any questions?
Yep, and I'm gonna answer those questions as soon as you.
Yeah, you answer with another question. You answer with another question.
I don't think he has any more questions. We've answered them, Steve.
No, you have, no, yeah, yeah Denise, you're an expert at dodging questions. That's what it's about. Dodge questions.
No, I, no, you don't.
They threw me out. No, they uh. Nothing. They, they wouldn't answer my questions. No, they, they blocked me out. Hey, this is the way it goes. I can't help it. I was, it was give and take. I'm waiting. They're gonna let me back in. I don't know. They fixed it. Yeah, mhm. Uh, plumber fixed it. Plumber. Yeah, they did, yeah. Yeah. No, I'll wait till it's over.
Admitted. So Barry should be back now with us. All right, everybody.
Do I get to finish up my uh, my time here?
What's going on here?
Do I get to finish up my time? Okay. Yeah, this is, I won't, I'm muted again? Muted again? You mute me again?
You're back, Barry. I can hear you.
How many times are you gonna mute me?
I didn't. I put you in the waiting room so we could discuss.
No, just now you muted me again. Okay, I, I don't care, I don't care. Because uh, I won't bother you, other people, uh, with, with this bickering and arguing. I mean, I can't, you can't speak at a meeting and get questions answered. You answer them with another question. That's fine. Well, I'll deal in another way. Uh, you've, I've had um, this has been going on, this non-compliance of the uh, open meeting laws and shutting people up for years. And so I will quietly do it. There will, I will file complaints and uh, the uh,
It is your legal prerogative.
Oh, I know, I know my, I know my rights. Don't believe me. You don't know the rights. You don't, you violate rights, non-compliance of laws. What you have here.
And I, and on the twelve open meeting laws, which you have.
You know, let me finish. Now, I only got another minute to talk and I'll be done. Don't interrupt me. I will uh, the Attorney General's office and other state agencies are taking cases of egregious non-compliance of the law. And I believe that is what's happening here. And I'll let them look at it. Maybe it'll happen, maybe it won't. But let me tell you, you certainly fit into that. Egregious, non-compliance of the law. I can prove it because I've, you've, you've shut people up. I've got, I've got videos of, of these uh, non-compliance items and how you deny everything and everyone does it. So I won't bother, I won't bother, but I'll tell you from now on, I'll speak, I'll speak softly and kindly. But if you decide you're going to, um, you're gonna dodge questions, I won't say anything. You'll get a notice the next day and uh, and we'll have to come back again in a week to respond to an open meeting complaint. That way we don't argue. And then you can think about whether you wanna come back next week. Whether you either just wanna answer a question honestly for the people, or do you wanna come back to a meeting for a complaint? That will be up to you. So that, that is what I'll do from here on. I'm not gonna ask you any more questions, but you've already racked up two complaints, so we're gonna have to come back two more times. And I want it documented, what happened along with the video. Denise, I need a copy of the video if you would please. I'll bring you over a uh, a thumb drive. Could you please put it on there? And within the week sometime, I'll drop it over so I can hear what was going on back there. Not only hear that, as you probably know, I have an LAC meeting, Learning Action Committee, where I uh, I, I, I present the video. So I, I, I let the people know what's going on. So anyhow, I'm done and I told you what I'm gonna say. I won't argue with you. Next time you do it, I just, it only takes, takes me about forty-five minutes to create a complaint. And then you have to uh, go out of your way to come and, and respond to it. And you can come and I can depend on you building a case against yourself. That's a given. No wrongdoing. We don't do anything wrong. Back to you.
Thank you, Barry. Now, I'd, I'd like to go back to uh, Mr. Moran. I don't know if you're still here with us.
I am, yes.
All right, we'd like to give you the floor.
I appreciate it. Um, so yeah, my name is Jonathan Moran. I'm running for the Essex Orleans County State Senate seat. Basically, um, I wanna make sure that uh, I am open, always available to the select board in the town of Newport Center. And if you guys have any questions, concerns, if elected, and even if I'm not, I'd be more than happy to bring them to my, for you. Um, again, I believe Denise does have my cell number. You guys are willing. If you guys want to, uh, you guys can call me anytime. We can schedule a meeting or a time to talk. Um, so yeah, if you guys have any questions with me.
No, I don't at this time. I see a lot of your signs out and about.
I appreciate that. Uh, normally, um, I'd drop off some rack cards or something along those lines. But with Zoom and stuff, it's, it's uh, a little bit difficult. But I should be able to drop some stuff off for Denise if you guys want sometime this week.
That would be nice, certainly.
Okay, will do.
Great.
Awesome. Well, I appreciate.
Denise, do you have anything for uh, Mr. Moran?
No, I don't. Not at this time.
You uh, all right, I guess if there's nothing else, then uh, thank you very much for attending.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys having me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for attending. All right, now, back up to uh, our agenda. And um, Mr. Duckless, update on land purchase. Are you still with us? I can see you.
I'm here.
Um, did, let me uh, go to the, did you get this in the? Yep, you did. Perfect.
I got it.
So, um, this is not a survey, exact survey, but it was what uh, Mike, our water system user, put together based on the rules of the state of Vermont and how much land that we need around that well. And it would make it easily used, put it that way. So it like goes, takes out that lower corner of your property.
Right.
Is your family receptive to uh, selling that piece of land?
So we are, I've sent this map to um, the, the entire family who's gonna participate in the decision. Um, so I have not talked to them. I just sent that to them today. Uh, so I figured I'd attend the meeting and see what other details you guys had for me. In general, this looks fine. It looks like what I was thinking would make sense.
Okay.
Um, that hundred and sixty foot piece uh, down the hill from the well, that makes sense because it's, so I, the whole thing makes sense to me. I like the way you did it.
Yeah, I mean, it, 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 there's no need to carving out something that is worthless to you.
Right.
That's the way we, I mean, not that it's worthless in money, I'm sorry. I shouldn't mean it that way.
So I do have a question. So I noticed the upper, uh, the upside of the hill, it's a hundred and eighty-four yards and the bottom's one seventy-three or one seventy-six. Um, I'm curious, I don't care, I'm just kinda curious. How did you come up with those dimensions?
Mike did that on his cellphone.
Oh, okay.
Okay, he took a, he has an app or whatever where he can take an aerial photo of the property. And then kinda put pins in and identifying the two hundred feet around the well. And that kinda fit. So instead of trying to tweak it, and I think if it, if your family is receptive in doing it, that we would probably just, a nice square out of there, you know, where the length of the sides would be the same.
Well, he did, James, he went on, he has Onyx content on his phone. So what he did is he just went and kinda just, you know, pinpointed those areas around. And obviously it would have to be surveyed, um, but it's approximately like five point seven acres more or less.
Okay, no, that sounds good. This is definitely good enough for me to talk to the family about, um, and see. It's a little more than, I told them it'd probably be somewhere between three and five acres. Uh, so it's a little more than what I told them, but that's, that's probably fine. I, I don't know that, that corner, we really don't use much. Um, we have done some logging there recently to clean things up. Not, not on this in particular, but we have cut down a few trees. So we can see the J peak better.
Mhm.
Um, so anyway, I'll, I'll bring this to them and, and make sure it's okay. Do you guys have a, an estimate on the cost or the price offer yet, or is that something you wanna work on after I approve the, the plot?
Well, you know, I mean, what we as a town did, uh, of course, we have, I don't know if you have this also that, that is the uh, itemized property cost town of Newport, two Elwood and Louise Duckless. And it's the, what the listers use for taxing. So it gives us.
Oh, I think Denise, did, did you send me that Denise? Maybe I did see that.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Yeah, I think you did. Now you say, say, sorry, Steve, I do have that.
Okay, so that, we came up, if you look at the uh, acreage, it's sixty-eight point three seven acres. And they have it assessed at a hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred. And if you divide the two to. And if you divide the two together, you, uh, come up with, I think it's seventeen hundred dollars an acre or something like that. That would be a starting point. Now, in any case, whatever we come up to in an agreement, um, we have a water board and we're supposed to take our findings to the water board for their input on that. Such as you're going to your family, select board would be going to the water board.
Okay, sounds good. And you're saying, uh, the math turned out to be about seventeen hundred dollars an acre? Is that what you said?
I don't have a calculator in front of me.
How many acres on there Steve?
How much is it Denise?
How many acres on that lister's card?
Sixty-eight point three seven.
Yeah, seventeen oh one oh four is what it comes out to per acre.
Okay, great. So seventeen hundred, perfect.
Yeah.
I'll, uh, I, when I say perfect, I mean, I understand.
Yeah, you're in the same position I am. I'll talk to the family and I'll talk to the water board. Hopefully, we can get information from both sides together.
Alright, sounds great. I'll, uh, we'll, I'll get the crew together and we'll, I'll probably have, I will definitely have talked to them by the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Duckless.
Hey James, so just so you know, the next meeting will be November fifth, so we'll put you on the agenda for that.
Okay, sounds good.
We'll just keep moving it down the road. We'll finally come to, come to the end.
Uh, it's still available for you guys to use anyway, right? So it's not, if you need it, it's still this. I just looked on the fifth, I am available. That will be fine. Um, so right now, everything is just kinda the way it has been, right? If you need it, you can use it.
Yep.
The well, I mean.
It, it's there and we keep a record of using it. So, you know, you can ask, uh, I can ask Mike to get, um, what he's used at the timeframe, um, you know.
Yeah, uh, it's fine. I don't, you don't need to go through that step for us. It's-
And I don't know if you're aware that it is not plumbed into our system. There's a well and it comes up to a spigot that's, that sits behind the reservoir. And in, when we were in that water hauling situation where we needed water, emergency water, um, we would run a garden hose from that spigot.
Yeah, he hasn't done that since we got the new wells though. Keep that in mind.
How it worked is, and the garden hose couldn't touch the ground. It had to be on, on wood and, so it was interesting.
Yeah, it does.
It worked. It was, it saved us considerable money. So thank you.
Very welcome. Alright, I'm gonna, uh, take off unless you guys have anything else.
No. And if we want to, uh, if, yeah, we can always have a special meeting, um, and then go into executive session for negotiations. But you can let Denise know what your family thinks of that and then we can move forward on that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye bye.
Bye. You're welcome to stay.
I've, I've, I've heard enough.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we're back to, uh, road commissioner's report. I don't know, did Sarah Damso? She hasn't come on, so I don't know if she's attending the meeting or not.
Um, I thought she was going to, but something may well have come up Steve. I don't know.
Okay. Well, what I've got from her, and at the last meeting, we had talked about uh, continuing with her services with Mike on the roads for the, uh, water quality improvements to the, uh, what do they call that? Drainage, the water drainage around the roads.
Erosion.
Erosion, right. So she, the Orleans County Natural Resources Conservation District. And she put together a service agreement, which, uh, we have here. I had a couple of questions I wanted to ask her on it. But being that she's not here, uh, we'll have to get a hold of her at a different time.
Yeah, we can table the signing of that until your questions are answered.
I made a motion to table it until another meeting.
Alright, I'll second that motion. We'll table it till the, uh, November meeting. And all those in favor of tabling this, uh, agreement to the November meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Alright, moving on. Uh, sign orders, review and approve bank statements and journal entries. And that is something that's ongoing. Jerry's been doing that, sitting there. Do we have any unfinished or new business?
No.
And Ernest, I don't think he's with us anymore.
Yeah, I'm still with you.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I'm listening. I'm listening. Keep my mouth shut.
All I see on the air is a telephone, so I just wanted to make sure you were there.
Yeah, I was there and, uh, I hope you solved all the problems, uh, uh, Barry seemed to talk a lot, but, uh, boy, uh, I, I'm glad I'm not in your position. Oh my gosh. Okay.
We don't need to talk about that. Move on.
Alright. Nothing else? Thank you Ernest.
Yeah, very good.
Alright, and we don't need an executive session for anything? I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed. We're going to adjourn. And I'm going to, uh, end the meeting. Thank you for coming everybody. I appreciate it.